We all ready?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out and spending time with us this evening. At this time, we will have our invocation by Elder Nelson for sent to you, and we will follow that with our pledge.
Thank you to the members of the City Commission. I thank you all for allowing me the opportunity. I would like to start reading the verse 1 of Psalm 55 from David. Give view to my prayer, O God, and do not hide yourself from my supplication. I pray this way, God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, and of creation. We bless you, O Lord, our God, King of the universe, sent us afar, who give gifts to all, that we may serve you, that we may use them for the benefit of all. Because of that great love which you have shown us, forgive us our sins. Allow these body of leaders and concerned citizens to discuss matters which pertains to this city we live in, in a way that honors your name, in a way that honors the Savior of the world, respecting the authorities you have put in place and respecting one another. May we strive tonight to hear the voice of wisdom. May be we willing, we be willing to receive it, and may we act on it, respecting frames of different beliefs and traditions. I humbly offer this prayer in the name of the Holy God and Son of God, Jesus Christ, my Savior, my Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Farm, roll call, please.
Mayor James.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Evans, if I could see if you can come up late. Commissioner Jameson is at it. Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Here.
All right. Shall we take a look at the agenda, please?
Madam, may I make a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Second.
All right. It has been properly moved in second, that the agenda be approved as printed. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right. Agenda carries three to one. All right. Approval of minutes for July 13th, commission meeting.
So moved.
A second, I'm sorry. I was reading.
It has been properly moved in second, that the minutes from July 13th workshop, as well as commission meeting, be approved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries three to zero. Next item, presentation of Florida firefighter assistance program grant check in the amount of $24,207.42 for the purchase of Airbags.
Good evening, Mayor James and commissioners, city manager Booth, city attorney Walker. It's our privilege to be here tonight. I'm Julius Hollis. I'm the director of the Florida Division of State Fire Marshal, and I have 43 years in the fire service. And it's my privilege to work for our chief financial officer, Jimmy Petronas, who was recently appointed by Governor Scott. And the CFO could not be here today. He has to be down in Broward, Fort Lauderdale, for unclaimed property of that. But I'm honored to be here, and with me tonight is my bureau chief of the Florida State Fire College, Mike Tucker, who did a lot of the legwork, he and his staff, on the development and implementation of the grant. I also have my assistant director, Melvin Stone, and he'll be helping me with the check presentation. And one of the reasons that I mention about my 43 years is not to brag, but to let you know that this is the first time in the history of my tenure that I've seen grant money from the state of Florida be shared with cities and counties that have challenging needs for the fire service to try to deliver. Your chief Gillingham, fire chief outstanding, very involved with our Florida Fire Chiefs Association, very cooperative with us as the state fire marshal's office in our regulatory role. But many of the local fire departments, as you know, want to provide a high level of service to provide that fire safety to the community, but also to the firefighters that take and risk their lives in many cases to rush in to protect a building and save lives and property when others are fleeing to be rescued. And so it is a tremendous honor, although it's a moderate amount of money. We were blessed that the Florida Legislature, the House and the Senate, with the approval of the governor, did appropriate $150,000. This is, we're just finishing up this first year of the grant, and it took time. We had statutory authority to develop a rule, so we did administrative rule for the criteria. And fortunately, it was designed to help small volunteer and combination fire departments, such as here in High Springs. So it's a tremendous honor. It's going to allow your department to buy four top-level National Fire Protection Association standard-approved breathing apparatus, self-contained breathing apparatus. And we wish you could, we could replace your whole complement of breathing apparatus. The funds don't allow for that much, but hopefully this will be a good beginning to help you to meet that goal, to have all fully national-standard breathing apparatus for your fire rescue personnel. So if Assistant Director would come up, and Mayor, it'd be your honor to receive the check, would you be willing to join us up front, Mayor James?
Absolutely.
Bruce, get up there, too.
Honorable Mayor James, we're proud to be able to present a check to you from the Division of State Fire Marshal, and it's made up to the city of High Springs, Florida, for $24,207. And signed by Jimmy Petronas, our chief financial officer and state fire marshal. And again, we hope that this will help to protect the community, as well as your firefighters who serve you in such an honorable way. Thank you, Mayor James, for allowing us to be here tonight.
We thank you for being here with us, and of course, we definitely thank you for this. And I know Chief Gillingham, Olivia Binsel, and we promise we will go very good.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Yeah, we'll get a picture with the chief right there. Hold him, have one of those, like, chief, sit down, you have a chief sitting here.
She will.
Hey, I'd cash it, but it won't fit in my ATM.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
If you can, enough excuse, we're going to head back to Tallahassee and Cal, respectively. Again, thank you very much, and congratulations on receiving this grant.
Thank you. All right. It's time to hear from our citizens, any requests and comments you might have for issues that are not on the agenda. And please state your name for the record, and limit your comments to five minutes, please. All right. Seeing none, we'll move right along to new business. Item number one is Consider Ordinance 2017-7.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is ordinance 2017-07, an ordinance of the city of High Springs, Florida pursuant to petition number ANXZ1700042 relating to voluntary annexation, making findings, annexing to and including within the boundaries of the city of High Springs, Florida, certain real property located in Alachua County, Florida, which is reasonably compact and contiguous to the boundaries of the city of High Springs, Florida. Redefining the boundaries of the city of High Springs, Florida, providing for land-use classification of the real property to be annexed, providing that effective January 1st, 2018, the real property to be annexed shall be assessed for payment of municipal ad valorem taxes and be subject to all general land and special assessments, providing that existing licensed businesses, trades, or professions operating within the real property to be annexed may continue such businesses, trades, or professions throughout the entire boundaries of the city of High Springs, Florida. Directing the city clerk within seven days of the effective date of this ordinance to file certified copies of this ordinance with the Florida Department of State, Florida Office of Economic and Demographic Research, the clerk of the Circuit Court of Alachua County, Florida, the chief administrative officer of Alachua County, Florida, the property appraiser of Alachua County, Florida, the tax collector of Alachua County, Florida, and all public utilities authorized to conduct business within the city of High Springs, Florida, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. The appropriate motion, Madam Mayor, is to pass ordinance 2017-07 upon first reading by title only.
Can you read that again, I missed?
Would you like me to go slower this time?
Sorry.
All right. Now, listen, we have any comments or concerns?
And, Madam Mayor, attached to the ordinance is a map that shows the subject property.
What is, how, do you know how large it is? Is it, on here?
Um, yes. It is approximately 5.31 acres, Madam Mayor.
So that's another pocket that we fill in, Mr. Booth.
And everybody's on board with it, happy, everything good?
This was a request from the property owner. It was a voluntary annexation petition, and the city has put the county on notice of our annexation.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to...
Wait before you do that. Any comments from the audience? Comments, questions? No?
Okay, go ahead. Okay. I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2017-07.
Second.
All right. It has been properly moved in second, ordinance be adopted. Roll call, Ms. Farm? Yes?
Yes.
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 All right. Motion carries four to zero. Item number two, consider resolution number 2017-L.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is Resolution 2017-L, a resolution of the city of High Springs, Florida, determining and declaring certain real property as surplus located in the city of High Springs, Florida, and authorizing the city manager to dispose of said property in accordance with the city's real property policy and/or affordable housing policy, repealing all resolutions in conflict and establishing an effective date. The appropriate motion is to pass Resolution 2017-L upon reading by title only.
This is the house that was given to us by the county. The value of it probably is between 10,000 and 12,000. We'll have it appraised and then sew it according.
Any comments, questions, concerns? Anyone from the audience would like to speak?
Make a motion to pass Resolution 2017-L.
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved in second. Ms. Farm, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Evans.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries four to zero. Next item is number three, resolution number 2017-M.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is Resolution 2017-M, a resolution of the city of High Springs, Florida, determining the amount of and fixing the proposed tentative rate of ad valorem taxation for fiscal year 2017, 2018, amending Resolution 2017-K, and providing for conflict, severability, and an effective date. Madam Mayor, there was a Scrivener's error in Resolution 2017-K, which at the previous meeting, this body set the tentative millage rate, but there was a Scrivener's error in the rollback rate, so this is just a corrective resolution to make sure that we are setting your ad valorem at the correct rate. So the rollback rate is 5.9972 mils.
Comments, questions, concerns?
No, ma'am.
All right. Well, I'm glad to see that we have a rollback rate here, so I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2017-M.
Second.
All right. It's been properly moved in second. Ms. Farm?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. Very good, very good.
Item number four, discuss providing school resources officer for the city of Newberry.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, I received a request from the Newberry city manager, Mr. New, to come up with the cost of taking over the resource officers for the city of Newberry. I want to put in the record that we are not trying to compete with the county. The question is, is just clearly that the effort went to the finance director and for Antoine to come up with what cost it would. None of the costs or resources from the city of High Springs could go over to Newberry. I couldn't look our taxpayers in the eye and say we're moving our resources over to that city, so they were willing to pay the full cost of that. I have to say again that their contract goes out in one October. In no way can we provide a resource officer at that time. We look at the earliest time as probably be in mid-November, and then providing one or two, and as we go from there. We're not trying to get into a bidding war with the county, it's just that it is my understanding that they're not going to renew their contract, period, and we need to provide that kind of protection to those kids in Newberry, and we probably have those kind of resources to do so. I also need to tell you that in the future, having future plans, probably over and above my tenure, is that I would like to see the three cities create a public service district, similar to the districts that occur in the library district. And I think if we take those three, all our resources in the three cities, and put them together, and then provide the service throughout this area, we will get better protection at a lower cost, because I know that the county has limited resources themselves. We actually provide a good portion of the fire protection in this area, so that then we could better service ourselves. And of course, the three cities would be Alachua, High Springs, and Newberry. And given all that, I would turn it over to those people that are here to talk.
Don't be bashful.
Right. We've heard some of y'all meeting, I know you like to help.
If the council directs, I will then start immediately in doing the recruitment and training.
Madam Mayor, commissioners, I'm Jordan Mar, the mayor over in the city of Newberry. I'm not here to talk. I wanted to be here on hand to answer any questions that you might have, answer any concerns that you might have. I do appreciate the city of High Springs and your willingness to pursue the creation of this option. Since I got elected, one of my primary goals is to present my commission with lots of options. And so your staff's willingness to look at the numbers, to think outside the box, we're greatly appreciative of that. If we can answer any questions, my city manager is here, our finance director is here, so if you have any questions that go beyond my level of expertise, they're on hand to answer those. And I'm certainly here to speak on behalf of my commission. But other than that, we hope for a favorable outcome from you guys, but other than that, I don't have much to say, unless you have a question of me.
And, Madam Mayor, I think what your manager is looking for tonight is direction from you, and then what would be coming back to you would be an interlocal agreement with the city of Newberry and the school board. And I think also, before you, you have a proposed financial that your finance director and our police department have put together in concert with the city of Newberry.
Has Newberry seen those?
It's my understanding that Newberry has seen these financials and has met with, the staffs have met, but I think your finance director might be able to speak to that more.
Yeah. It is also up on the screen, so that the public can see that.
We have actually tried to, you know, back before, and come up with, there's a couple other things that we're still talking about, one of those is the hiring process, and we think that it would be excellent, we can put in that, we can, the sergeant is still kind of working out the whole part of the sergeant, but I think we're pretty close
Antoine, is PD on board with this, I mean?
Yes, we are. We're on board with the directions, city manager.
Well said.
Says the Colonel.
Any comments, concerns from the...
Okay. I see you can find this for training. That's in this, training for the officers?
So the training part of it, there's a $500 per officer that comes from the county, that's in this, that 20,000 per officer. Bottom where it says free, there's 20,707.
Yes.
There's $500 per officer that the school board pays for, and we have agreed that anything outside of that will, that will be a plus reimbursement.
Okay. And then again, just want to make sure for the citizens, these officers will be resource officers for the city of Newberry. We're not taking on Newberry Police Department.
Right.
But that's not what we're doing, that it's going to serve as resource officers. Am I correct?
You are correct.
And the full cost is at the expense of Newberry?
Yes, ma'am.
None of High Springs funds are being spent for this purpose.
Madam Mayor, if I may, not only is Newberry willing to pay the full freight, but Newberry will use those school resource officers 180 days out of the school year. They would enhance these services to your residents in the city of High Springs for the remainder of that year. So I think there's a mutual benefit to both of our cities if we can make this proposal work. It shouldn't cost your residents anything, and they should receive a higher level of service, and my residents would then have at least some options to consider as we move forward.
Madam Mayor, I believe too that in the proposal that's in front of you, it not only includes the cost of the city, but also a 10% administrative cost that would go to the city in addition to the actual cost associated with those school resource officers and crossing guards.
Right. I see administrative, I believe, at 10%.
Okay.
You see it?
Me personally, I'm for it. I mean, if we can help a fellow city out, and provide some of our services, and it'd be budget-neutral, and maybe even make a little bit of money to help defray the costs and whatnot, I'm for it. I mean, me personally, you know, of course, we want to see the interlocal and the contracts that are going to have to come up for it to take place, and I want to make sure that on both of those, that both of the cities, whether it be Newberry or High Springs, has an out on it. Either one of them decides this isn't the way we want to go, be able to get out of it, no hard feelings. But I think it'll be beneficial for both of us, and we'll see what comes down the road.
One more question. Okay, I should now say, is the officer not available? Then a sergeant will fill in, that what's...
The sergeant will fill in.
One of your guys already don't do that, one of these guys is going to be sergeant.
No, in that agreement, there will be, you know, 100%, or sergeant that's going to coordinate for the crossing guards and the three SROs.
SROs.
We have so many personnel that someone has got to...
Okay. So that'd be one, sergeant, that's already on?
Add sergeant.
Add sergeant?
Add.
Okay. Okay.
Madam Mayor, to answer the commissioners' questions, if you look at the top of the spreadsheet, you'll see that it contemplates the hiring of one sergeant and three school resource officers.
Okay, gotcha.
And Madam Mayor, if I may interject, that would also be one additional sergeant who would be coordinating school resource officers for 180 days out of the year. He would also be coordinating school resource officer for your school resource officer. And then at the end of the school year, that's another officer that would come back to High Springs to enhance the level of your service to your citizens. So in essence, you'd be getting four officers for half of the year above and beyond what you have now that are new officers, that you can tell your residents, you know, we've been able to add these folks to our force.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
What about the crossing guard? Are they part of the school resource officers or separate?
My understanding is that they're separate, they're separately itemized in the proposal that we have.
It looks like it, yes.
But we pay the full freight of those crossing guards, but they're not, they're separate people. They wouldn't be the same personnel.
And would we hire them as well, or would they come from the city of Newberry?
No, they are really part-time. They're only paid for when they work.
Right.
So they wouldn't come here, they would basically go away until school, then re-adjourns.
Right. But would we solicit those, or would you look for Newberry residents to be able to do that?
Well, true, we will look at Newberry residents because they know their kids better than anyone, but we will then do the recruiting in Newberry for those crossing guards.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Then I need a motion to give Mr. Booth's direction.
You need a motion or just direction?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to your city manager to have a motion, providing him direction to bring you back in interlocal agreement.
Make a motion to have our city manager bring back an interlocal agreement with Newberry, providing school resource officers.
Second.
All right. It has been properly moved in second, that we get to work on item number four, so we can cover additional resource office to cover Newberry. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion carries four to zero. All right, Mr. Booth? All right, City Attorney's report?
Madam Mayor, I have no report this evening, only that Mr. Walker apologizes for his absence, but he is at the Florida League of Cities Municipal Attorneys Conference this week, so hopefully he'll come back with some great information for us next meeting.
Some good news.
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Jones?
I have no comment.
City Manager?
Oh, I'm sorry!
That's all right, ma'am.
I'm so sorry!
I've talked enough, but we had a planning and zoning meeting on Tuesday night. You'll get more and more annexations coming to you. But from them, they've somewhat directed me that they want to try to annex all the enclaves we have in the city. And as you can see, you also have a map, but a good portion of our city is really not in the city, it's really in the county. And so the attorney will write letters that I'll sign and take out, and talk to the people, and convince them that this is an opportunity to come in. It increases the value of their property because then they can develop it from there. We also have the sewer and water and the rest of the facilities that's needed for developing property. And so that will be coming back to the board probably in the next six months. As you see, on the 5th of August, we have the food share. I have a number of volunteers that will be there to give out the food. We are advertising more this time. We noticed that the first time we did it, we had a lot of customers that came in. It's free food, so they're not really customers, but we give them the food. The second time, we didn't advertise, and we had less. This time, we're going to go back to the advertisement, and please come out, doesn't have anything to do with income or anything else. The food is given by the rural, whatever it is. Yeah, I know, farm share is what it is. And they get food from the farmers. This is a subsidy program to them, and then we give it out. And so you're certainly welcome to come, and that's all I have.
Apologize.
He's been married, he used to be in the war. And I'm lost.
Now he's getting his foot stuck.
It's either me or it.
Vice Mayor Evans?
Nobody else, anybody?
No.
Well, stick with the trend and keep my mouth shut, since I probably said it on that earlier.
All right, well, I guess that means I'm ready for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, meeting adjourned.